Don't.
Yeah.
Or is that a page?
No, total.
Total?
Yeah, it'd be um roughly a half a mile on Crooks and just a little over a mile. On um Beach Hill.
Okay, and that's a one inch.
Two inch.
Two inch.
Two inch all the way.
Is that for the state bid?
No.
No.
No, that's just, it's just a quote.
Okay.
Yeah.
That.
When, when we get closer. I'll get ahold of Franklin County and we'll put a big package together and send it out.
Hmm.
On that.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, yeah, then, then after that, it goes, it goes. All over the place. I have some paperwork needs to be signed by you too. Since we don't have three.
The first one. It was called the RAP program or assistance through. The money we got last year for repairing road potholes and all that.
Yeah.
They changed it. It's called Winter Recovery Assistance Program.
All right.
All right, so. I'm using this two hundred eleven. Two hundred eleven thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-one cents to go towards. North Lanford Road Bill.
Okay.
Uh, okay, now, it, it, it's all around into one big bill. Okay, uh, it is one big bill on the. I had, I had funding.
Yeah.
They had to separate everything.
Yeah.
This one here. This is the other one. This is one. I don't remember if you were here for part of it or not, Jeff. Um. Chapter ninety. Was for, um, we start off at. Two hundred and fifty thousand, uh, chapter ninety brought it up to up another hun- hundred thousand, three fifty. Or four, and now we're just. And when Chris comes up. He's gonna pass out a, a letter, you have, you have it signed, so I can forward it to um, district one. Add another fifty thousand dollars to it. So grand total, this one would be four hundred thousand dollars out of chapter nine. That's a good number. It's sad. It's, well, it's a great. It's better than what you started with. Well, yeah, so everybody giving stuff like, I heard it's good.
Yeah.
This one, I'll, I'll let him finish.
Yeah.
This one here is the last bill, cause when we did um. Bottom stage now over a little bit and they had come back and repair it. Yeah, I, I held that five percent. Of the bill. Yeah, this is the end of the five percent, three thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars. Okay. This one here is that we're gonna get reimbursement from the state on this. It's billed and paid by. We paid them already. Now it's our turn to get paid by the state for reimbursement. I know it seems so much paperwork for doing those stuff.
That's all right. As long as the money's coming our way, that's.
That's, oh, yeah, yeah.
Did you get it? Did you get that uh thing about the uh your zone?
I, I, yes, yeah, okay.
Got a sign here too. But since I here, I'm just asking.
Uh, in the back, right?
Let me see that for a second.
Yes, yes, you do. Yes.
Sorry.
Are the other ones like that? No.
All of it is, uh, you.
Okay.
There's, there's.
Was me. Thank you.
Right, yeah.
There's no sense of chasing it twice, right, or forgetting it?
Or three times or four times.
Or bash.
I got it, got you.
Yeah. Well, see this. When you print this off, it comes in two sheets.
Oh, yeah.
Because. The spine part here. Don't get printed. So I had to sit there, I had to adjust the whole paperwork. Better than me than you, right?
That's it. I'm running my mind in a hurry. Um, cause me and it would be having trouble.
Yeah.
I had it, it still don't work, so. Um. Yeah, um, when Chris comes, was Chris does his um. His budget and all that stuff in brief. Um, we're looking at possibly doing a, a culvert pipe or. Culvert bridge, wha- uh, whatever you wanna call it, over on Schoolhouse Hill.
At the bottom there?
Yeah.
Little bridges? That's, well, it's just a little bridge.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
It's not much of a bridge.
No, it's not. I mean, it, it, it is in good shape. So I'll, we'll see if we can revamp it, put some more money into it.
Doesn't that need a culvert up higher on the hill this way too?
And uh, you talking about this side of the road?
Yeah, and Russell Road side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, it need more than that.
Yeah, I, I know, but it wouldn't have told us about some of that.
Um, no, it would.
Yeah.
It would, but. Um, my plans are is to. Work on drainage on both sides of that road all the way down.
Makes sense. You gotta blow that rack up out.
Um. I have a ham- we have a hammer.
Well, you'd be there forever. That's you.
Yeah. The people, the guys thought the rocks around here were huge too, until they started going into it, and then it woke up nice. But anyway, um, I'm looking into probably doing some work on it. Um. This year coming up, eh, probably next year, cause I don't, I don't foresee the grant going through overnight.
No, no.
Okay.
It's.
Um, we also, um, I talked to Christopher about doing. Another math works grant. For Beach Hill Road. With a bridge.
Bottom of the hill one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Pretty tough shape.
It is. I mean, it. The, 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 the base is in good shape. Needs a little work. It just, just needs cosmetic work on top.
Yeah.
Is there, I know you're talk- I'm sorry, I didn't mean interruption.
Oh, that's.
You're talking about bridges. The ones on Russell Road. Just below where, where uh, I call it night work, but it's not, that is schoolhouse, uh.
Yep.
All the irons falling out of it, it's rotted. Can, can we get someone, we have the personnel that could just pick those up and weld them?
No. It has to be all redone. If you, if you go around to, to, was that DOT does? They take it, they hammer it all out and they all put brand new ones in.
Well, cause they did it in Huntington on the bridge by Gateway. They didn't tear it all out of there.
No, no, they, they, they just take parts of it out.
Yeah, right. So I didn't, yeah, we could just pick it up, a little welded and call it a day. That's all. Our bridge, right?
Yeah.
And you, and you replaced that with rubber and rail?
Not a bad idea.
Cause remember, I don't want to see a lot.
What's that?
It, it's.
Yes, what, the sides of the bridge.
No, you don't wanna get into that that far.
Shouldn't either. Thank you.
So here's your piece, TJ, and the iron is sitting in like this.
Yeah.
Well, they've rotted. So I thought if you picked them up, put a piece of angle iron under there, weld it in, and I'll come to it on my time, cause I can weld. And we'll have it done. But can we do that is my question?
I, I'll, I'll have to look into it.
I just.
Yeah.
You know, cause it is our bridge. I, if we can do it, I'd spend two or three days there.
No, no.
Wouldn't bother me.
Much salt damage is done to that.
You said the end is good.
Oh, to the, uh, the one on Beach Hill? Yeah, it's, it's, it's really not bad. It really is.
Don't, and the one that, uh.
Oh, I have, I haven't.
Yeah, well, I haven't been under ten years. I used to take my granddaughter fishing, so I can't tell you either.
But, um, anyway.
Yeah.
So. I, I did some work last of a year or so ago on it with a, with a, with an engineer and, and, and I told him, says, we have some, there's two major problems. The water. So when they, when they do. Start working on it, they, all, everything underneath it has to be encapsulated.
Right.
Because it's Springfield water.
That is.
Oh, yeah.
Down Russell or Beach Hill.
Beach.
Oh, okay, yeah, sorry, I was, I thought we were still talking.
No, so.
I apologize.
And the other part is, is that. It has to be done within probably three months or four months to max. Because unless we get permission for arms being for water, there's no shortcut.
We'll make them pay for part of it. And we'll close the road. Unsafe.
Oh, the residents will love that.
Yeah, yeah, then, then, I mean, just, that's, the residents in school buses would be just a, a killer.
Yeah, no, no, it's there. If, if we're doing work on it, I would like to see that bridge.
Why do you? Well, and we talked about that too. And he was saying, he was saying that they could bring in sections. That are like three or four feet wider on each side.
Yeah.
So that. You would be able to have it wider and our guard, guard rows would be on top.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
You know? But I really love to have it like. Turned a little bit. You know, and make it more of a never approach.
But when you're looking at moving all the.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
You know, you're looking at. Well, we'll see with the mat, with, with, with the mass works grant.
Yeah.
It can be. A million, it can be ten million.
Really?
Yes.
You remember when they did the bridge in um, East Hampton over to Manhattan River?
Yes, yeah.
They closed the road. And they did that thing in ten months. Completely start to finish.
And they even had like a little labor dispute for a little bit, but then they cleared it up and.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and I was, I, they, I never saw one done that fast in my whole entire life. And that was, uh.
Was it a precast bridge?
Always, no, I don't think so. It was northeast construction. So you know northeast lumber that you use here, the tree company?
Yeah.
It's the same company, but they have a construction.
Oh, really?
Awesome. Those guys are phenomenal, but. Of course, you gotta bid on it, so who knows?
Yeah, get a bit on everything these days.
Yeah.
You know, it's really sad.
Yeah.
Um. That's all really what I got.
Our, our equipment holding up.
Our equipment's holding up pretty good so far. I got one truck, one five fifty being worked on right now.
Yeah.
Couple lights came on, so. Still, it's, best part, warranty.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So.
What, what's that, the newest one or not the newest one, but?
Well, yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's, it's the nineteen.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a nineteen. So. Well, yeah, um. Like, yeah, right now, I got one of the guys working on the old army truck. Um, and I had plans of. Well, actually tomorrow, I got. Sixty-eight loads of stone coming in for Gibbs Road. To uh. Lay it out there, get it ready.
You said culvert a problem out there yet?
You think so? On which one? The first one?
The, no, the one down in the bottom.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The hill.
Yeah. Um, I was, and the plans are getting it all taken care of for us until all this water came. And I, I, I don't have the ability to make a big box. On the outside, on the, on the entrance to hold it all back. It's so deep out there.
Really?
Yeah, it's probably about almost four feet deep.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, I got, I got three foot bags, you know, three foot square bag.
Yeah.
But I just, I don't feel comfortable putting on top of each. Right now. And if I opened it up and the wire went around. People probably screaming.
I hear you.
But no, it's, um, there are a couple spots here and there, especially this, this is a long section up past Fontaine Farm, it goes up by the pines. I was up there last week and it was pretty soggy. And I figured, oh, best time to do it now, it's supposed to rain coming up.
I plowed my backyard to get my trailer out.
Did you start?
I picked my plow up. And the thing went in over the wheels up this far in the mud.
No.
So, yeah, I got stuck. I'm not safe, cause it's only like the third time in my life I got stuck plowing. It was like.
Yeah, it, 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 it was running, wasn't running, but it was, it was getting soggy.
Yeah.
So I'll go put some stone up there.
Is this the best you can do?
Yeah. I mean, I can't, I can't dig out any other stuff, it's all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Slimy mud.
Yep, it is.
Yeah.
But, you know, putting stone in there now and hopefully it may help it. When springtime does roll around in the next few weeks.
It'll give it some.
Some body.
Oh, yeah.
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 That's probably a lot of womb in there originally too. Back in the day, right?
Yeah. You know, the first four or five inches or so is like a little mucky buck. But over the years, though. Doing the correct process for it and putting stone on it instead of processed stone, cause you little round rocks don't hold together.
I know.
No, it's like marbles. Unless you put them in a bag.
Yeah.
But yeah, um, I, I, I worked for a few towns that did it that way and. No, ain't gonna happen here.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Try to do my best.
Food and well.
With, 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 what I can. Thank, anybody else?
Well, it's time to head to Beckett.
Not yet. Oh, two more minutes.
Two more minutes. Thank you, Dave.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Hey, Christopher.
Yeah.
Was he up now?
Yeah.
He's off at Norton, up at bat. I'm up at bat. Uh, so yeah, real quick, uh, budget and finance update. Uh, so we're gonna have. Forms go out to department heads, uh, hopefully this week. Um, so we'll have everyone send back, and I know.
I, I already dropped it on.
Yeah. We're being into it. Um, but yeah, we'll have everyone send back, you know, requests, um, any issues they're experiencing right now with their budgets, though I, I haven't really seen. Much out there that's a problem. Um, and then hopefully we'll be able to schedule meetings with the finance committee late January, early February. Knock those out, um. And uh. And then from there, you know, it'll be. Pacing the budget together with. When we hear back from the schools, when we hear back from. Uh, a few different contracts with our finance team, so. Uh, some more updates to come on that. Uh, in terms of grant updates, uh, the base dates, um, grant for seniors. Uh, we've got a computer training. Originally, we were looking at the twenty-third, which is the next, uh, Monday, we'll have a meeting. Um, however, I just spoke with, uh, Mike the Bearded Tech Guy, who has been our. Uh, he's been the guy running these trainings.
Mm-hmm.
Um, he's dealing with some COVID or something at his house. He was saying he's gonna need to push it to the following Monday, so. January thirtieth, we should have, um, meeting then. Uh, real quick update on the ADA transition plan. We got, um. All the reports back from the consultant. Um, just waiting on a few more comments from department heads, and then I'll send those back to the consultant. Um, couple things we need to clarify, they didn't provide any. Cost estimates for any outdoor improvements. So for example, you know, where they said, oh, this needs to be graded so that a wheelchair wouldn't slide backwards.
And where was this at, I mean?
Eh, every single town building, yeah.
Okay.
One light for, could they have that little brick, uh, post office?
Yeah, yeah, no, so they, they did that too.
Yeah, cause I saw him over there when I was getting my galley. I was just. You know, wondering which states that one or they all, I didn't, we don't even have them anywhere else, do we?
Nah, not really.
No.
No.
Really, other than the one out back.
Right. So, yeah.
Now, what, what about like, uh? The historical society, the white church, those fall under the town or?
They have the, not the white church, because that's.
Private.
That's private, but we do own the historical society.
Okay.
Oh, like, yeah, we have a, a ninety-nine year lease to the historical society.
You did that anyway.
Um.
I did. I thought, I thought they owned the church and that.
They just own the church, but, um. But yeah, there were actually, there was a pretty significant.
Oh, boy.
Uh, improvements that, so, uh, and, you know, I've sent off whatever reports I get to our department heads, they took, take a look at them, you know? But I just try to remind everyone, you know, this is a tool that we can use to apply for funding. It's not like now that we have this report, you know, someone's gonna come and. You can find us or something like that. It's just, it's a tool we can use to actually get the work done. So, yeah, so that's where we stand with that, and that's also gonna be pretty helpful for our capital improvement plan, um, because. We can. Kind of integrate that into that as well. Um. Next thing I wanted to give you a quick update on, so, uh, Dave and I had been talking about. Tree canopy and what we can do there. It feels like our funding's not really going far enough, uh, in terms of all the work we need to do. Um, so I was looking into it, uh, DCR has what's called an urban forestry grant and. Don't take that to mean like big city. That just means, uh, cities, but also, uh, trees along your roadways. Um, and so they had a grant program. It looks like in the past they funded. Um, you know, programs basically to collaborate with other communities or other governments to help out with your tree maintenance. Um, so we were looking at Beach Hill Road, Springfield Water. Um, we'll see if we can talk to them about figuring some kind of arrangement out there and maybe apply for a grant and help. Chip away at this tree canopy problem that we have. Uh, some more to come on that. And then as Dave mentioned, the culvert replacement. Um, municipal assistance grant program. So that's, um, as he mentioned, you know, Schoolhouse Hill Road is the one he was looking at initially. Uh, there's a whole bunch of culverts in that stream system.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we'll have some kind of free, uh, RP call with Mast dot on that. Um, they can kind of tell us, hey, are we headed in the right direction? Does this make sense? And then we'll move from there. Uh, so we'll submit a grant prior to February one.
Are there any helps out schoolhouse?
No.
No.
Not on that section.
Yeah.
Well, you're talking from Russell Road back to, uh.
Then I broke in.
I, what, it's my family name, and I can't even remember. There's nothing there.
No, no, no.
The only, only thing that. What has to be done is for an emergency.
Yeah.
Was if the bridge downfall, it gets lost or whatever.
Yeah.
There's no way out.
Okay. Right. So that was the thinking was the. People on Nightbrook aren't gonna have a way out unless we do that one.
Now, what, what about the other part of Schoolhouse that goes out to Huntington Road? That's not usable at this point, is that?
I don't think.
Correct. So would, would that be a way to make an access as well?
And for the bridge in.
Huh?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't, I, I knew there was trouble, but we need a bridge.
I, I walk, I walked down a portion of last year. Um. From Huntington, yeah. And. It's a wall.
Yes, I know.
I do a little, you're running into, uh, conservation issues too, because there's still culvert pipe down, the wire runs through.
Yeah, that, and I, 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 I remember when, uh. Oh, your predecessor. Rainings first came on. Uh. The, uh, farm near Blueberry Joe, uh, Jane wanted to have the rodent brood, so she put Denver to back property there. And. It's low. No, you're talking, but. Rough estimate. Five hundred thousand or more.
Oil leak, yes.
Yeah.
Cause you, you know, had, no. There we go, tree canopy.
Yeah.
You had to open the right up, you had to dig a wire, we put all the brand culverts in, we ditched everything, and they bring the road up.
Oh, yeah, and, and the, and the road was in the, in the fall, in the spring, I mean.
But when you get around to that, that big hole, no, four pipe is on your side of it, and it, that, that's a big piece of leg.
Now.
About sixty feet. And conservation have, uh, build a, then D E B probably. Wouldn't, at night when they're not up, no. I got a question to fart, now, I might go back step just a little bit.
Yeah.
Um. When the guy, I, with, remember he was here from Shepherd Road complaining that.
Yes.
Um, Lloyd's Hill was, uh, not Lloyd's Hill.
Virgil Lloyd.
Yeah, well, we never called it word or something. But is that something we should start looking into for another access? Because we have a lot of houses out there. Somebody got trapped. The house is where? Uh, on Shepherd Road that could get out on Lloyd's Hill, uh, Lloyd, no, I wasn't by there today. Virgil Lloyd, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Should we look at some repairs there? Cause there are a couple houses out there.
So just last month. We met with Chester and Middlefield and some folks from there on this disturb road project.
Yeah.
So that's one of the roads that we.
It's okay. I just, I'm just throwing out an idea to look in the future. I'm not saying that we gotta start it tomorrow, but.
I got, I got.
You remember last time we talked about put speed signs down there?
Yeah.
Shepherd Road, yes, yeah, so we stole. You're kidding.
Yeah.
Most in all.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
Do you know where they put them?
I know where my, my guys put them. They go more.
No.
Nothing's safe.
Yeah.
No.
Then we're all.
Moving on. Yes, uh, really quick, I also just wanted, I sent you kind of a late email about a couple other grant updates. Uh, one really quick. We got, uh, we got the grant for the sign.
Yeah.
Out in front of the post office there.
Yeah.
Um. So it's a, it's a little bit more than twenty-five thousand dollar grant. Um, the idea was to have some kind of electronic sign there that, you know, you can update from your computer, and we can put. Town warrants and other announcements on there.
Now.
Um.
Is that solar operated?
Well, so we, we have no electricity anywhere in that section.
Yeah, we'd have to figure out what it would be exactly. Um, so there are a few different companies that provide these kinds of signs that are out there, so we might end up putting out an RP and just, you know, see what comes back.
Yeah.
Um. But hopefully, you know, there's, there's some money for that, and then potentially if there's anything left over, a little money to spruce up the, the parking lot there.
Yeah.
Post office. Get the video sign maybe.
That parking lot's not ours. You do realize that.
I think the parking lot is ours.
Oh, I don't believe so.
What, what, in front of the post office?
I don't know who yelled at it, but that's part of the park. That's under.
Yeah, it's under Centennial.
Under Centennial Park.
Yeah, right, right.
So that is own, if you look at the post office and you're looking at the stone wall that goes to my house, that goes straight out to Russell Road. That parking lot is all part of that bicentennial park.
Is it really?
Yeah, it most certainly is.
Well, as the park trustees.
But it's. Don't you try to get out of flower net.
I'm not, oh, you did actually, yeah, yeah.
Huh?
Thanks.
Yeah. You got a flower, maybe, well, you got a flower, uh, beagle, you got a flower that.
So anyway, we want to come on now, and we'll see, uh, that we should have some contracting documents back from the Economic Development Council soon, so. Let's get a little forward on that, uh, really quick, on the library patio, uh, we got a new proposal from Ty and Bond to do the. Patio, uh, basically to do the design and then also facilitate the construction process. Um, I think they may already have somebody in mind for construction, let them work with them on that. Um, but that's moving forward and Nicole's doing a nice job of just kind of coordinating that with other work that has to be done to that. Over a hundred twenty-five year old building, so.
Didn't cost us anything, it was free.
That's right, I'll get it that way. Um, and then real quick, um. I sent you the Assistant Treasurer Collector posting. Uh, we had closed applications last Thursday, we really didn't get quite the number we were looking for, um, so we're gonna reopen it. Few minor changes to that, uh, not requiring a bachelor's degree. Uh, Sarah had initially suggested we include, you know, must have a bachelor's. Seems like that might be an impediment to some applications. We met, upping the number of hours slightly to be on par with what Karen had, when she would have provision. Uh, and then just made it a little clearer that, hey, this is a benefit position and it has real potential to become the treasurer collector, not just assistant. Um, we'll post it on, there's a mass treasurer collector website, so we'll post it on there and Sarah thinks we'll be able to get a lot of responses.
Now, is there, is like, uh, instead of a bachelor, like, uh, do they have like an equivalent league?
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could say, you know, um. I could talk to Sarah about it tomorrow morning about what kind of requirements, but.
What kind of years of experience? You know, and you had five years at another place and you're, you're looking and say, well, that equals that, right? That's, I agree with you, cause on the job experience sometimes is better than a degree. So that would be absolutely the right approach as far as.
Let me talk to Sarah about what she thinks would be the right equivalence either.
Thank you for helping me with that word.
But we got through it, DJ.
We did.
It was tough, but we got it.
And then real quick, moving on, uh, some other department updates, uh, so the Historical Commission. Um, they've been working with Pioneer Valley Plan Commission on this Main Street area historical inventory. Springboard to any kind of other funding for historical preservation along Main Street that the town wants to do. Um, that's finally complete, or the draft form is complete, the store commission is gonna gather comments and send them back to P V P C. Um, but this could be great for, uh, you know, looking at future funding opportunities, we'd have to kind of determine. What the boundary is there, you know, exactly how much of Main Street includes. Um, Shannon Walsh from P V P C had initially suggested, I think. Um, right around the country club on North Street, all the way somewhere. You know, on Warren Oka Road there, so past when you're, you know, past.
South Street. Worked on that here.
Yeah, so a little path there is what she was looking at, but we can, you know, once she's finalized that, we can discuss it and figure out what makes sense for it.
Now, can I ask a question? On this one, it says, one oh two Main Street, which is the post office. Okay. Now, my house is one hundred, which was the post office, and it was the post office way before that was there and I. And if they got nineteen fifty, that house is there in the forties. And it was moved there, just for your records, I'm just.
If you have any comments or anything, let me know.
I just happened to glance at it, cause it was my kind of like, oh, that was. I mean, I do remember a lot of it, not all of it anymore.
I'm not gonna touch that.
Well, you can say what you want, I don't mind, I got big shoulders. That's good, thank you, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I just, there's some updates, and my sister's the one who has a memory that would know all this. She's like, oh, you don't remember that? I go, no. She's got a memory like. I'm not either. Sorry, I didn't.
Yeah, no worries, uh, and then just one last quick item, um. So Kara and Joanne and I have been talking about, um, responsiveness from department heads to residents, we kind of wanna make sure we're. Up in our game in that department. I'm gonna be having, setting up standing meetings with all of our, or not all, but many of our department heads in the next few months, just to make sure there's a little bit more check in. Um, just so we know that people are getting the services that they're paying for, so. Uh, but any, a- a- any comments or questions on that, come to me, let me know.
Now, we just had two resignations, so TJ and I are now, uh, zoning board.
Yeah, let's, uh, I guess we can move on to the first action item and then.
I guess I jumped the brick, brick there a little bit, I'm sorry.
So now, as far. Mass state laws.
Oh, do you wanna skip ahead to that?
I would like to swipe.
Yeah, sure. Do you mind making a motion to move to action item four H? Chapter ninety funds.
Oh, yeah.
We just signed it, right?
I make the motion to, uh, move to. Action item four nine.
Yeah, I'll second that, chapter ninety funds.
All in favor, I.
Yeah, it's four. And what the, I think that has Kara's name on it, so she's gonna be back later this week to sign.
Okay.
So.
What time later this week?
I think Wednesday is what we figured out.
Perfect.
Yeah, right?
Well.
We don't know yet, okay.
So you need to tie up with Kara somehow? You want, you want to see Kara?
Yes, I would like, I would like to see her, so she can sign that document.
Just, I have, we have a copy, we can just put it in front of her when she.
Yeah, there's two other things.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay. All right, awesome. Watch out for deer bear.
Yes, you do.
Watch out for the fog.
Now we can, yeah, go back to the item A there.
Okay. The resignation.
Yes, so, um. Uh, so I, I believe Jim has already. Tendered his resignation.
Yeah.
Um, and Don had said he will.
Visit a fifty.
Yeah. Um, so as you pointed out, TJ, over the weekend, uh, so under mass state law. Comes the zoning board for the time being, uh, obviously, we don't want that to be going on for too long, so we're gonna have to. Do some serious outreach and find some folks, so, you know, keep, uh, certainly note anyone in your mind who you come up with, who might be a good C B A candidate.
Has, uh, Don or Jim expressed any interest in, in helping? A new appointed board? Um, you know.
They probably would help us out. What I will say is I've also reached out to P V P C. Um, uh, something that some other communities do is have what's called a zoning administrator. Um, so that's like a, a higher position, and they are, they can basically make. Decisions on certain zoning issues, and there's a whole list of them that they can handle, rather than having the C B A do it. Um, so that could, you know, I'm gonna, we'll see what P V P C says, um. My thinking is, well. If the workload is too much, or it's, or whatever, you know, having somebody who can take that off their hands. Could make it more attractive for people to volunteer, and then we don't end up in a situation where.
Well, a- and I know that, you know, getting volunteers in this town is like. Pulling teeth where there are no teeth.
It's tough, and that's a particularly difficult, uh, work to be on, in a lot of ways.
Yeah, well, it is, it is, it's very controversial.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I think sometimes we're better off with people who are not involved. You know, you, you're not, you're not going into personalities.
Sure, histories and personalities and whatnot, yeah. Um, so I think we just need a motion to accept those, uh, resignations from Jim and Don.
I make the motion to accept the, uh, resignations of Jim Tronholm and Don Brainerd. Effective involved January fifteenth for both.
No, Jim's isn't immediately.
His is immediately. So, uh, the motion to accept Jim Tronholm's, uh, resignation immediately. Wait a second.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Second. We're gonna do it together, and she was gonna, look.
I. If I hear an I from Jeff will be good. Okay, and then, uh, the second one, the, to accept the resignation of Don Brainerd. From the zoning board of appeals effective January fifteenth.
Second.
I.
I.
Okay. Done and done. I'll reach out to, I'll reach out to Donnie to see if he would be willing to, you know, just come in and help.
I'm sure.
You know, I'm sure it would. It was nice to, it was nice to be asked.
Through all the years, per se.
Uh, all right, item C, the H P Laser Jet Service Contracts, I think this is the Joanne Show.
Yeah, this is said time again. Um, the, the quote is exactly the same as two years ago.
Now, is this for two of whom join?
No, just one, uh, one year quote. Two-year quote, and that is exactly the same price as. Years ago, probably because we didn't use it.
Sure, that's pretty good profit.
Well. Big problem, we had an older machine. Uh, and it, they just couldn't fix it, it was driving me nuts, cause I was constantly on the phone with them, and they started coming in and they could not fix it, so they gave it to me. So basically, that, that was the new machine in the last two years, so we didn't have to operate it.
So, I make the motion that, uh, we accept the contract.
One year is two year, TJ.
Absolutely.
It's true, but because we've got that Mass Municipal Association Conference coming up this month. And Kara and I. Kara and I are both going, so.
You guys went last year too.
Did they?
Pretty sure. Um. And it can be transferred, but. Um, you know, I'll, I'll talk to you about it.
Yeah, we might just wanna go with the one year as well.
Really?
I'm suggesting, potentially.
How much are the savings?
How much was the other one?
Eleven thirty-nine and six hundred rounded off. You're saving like seventy bucks. Well, not sixty dollars.
Yeah.
Fifty, fifty-nine, if you wanna be exact.
Yeah.
No, it's, if you're gonna have it, it's, it's who you're deals, it's fifty-nine bucks in our pocket. If you're not, if you're upgrading equipment with something, you know, I, I, I don't know what you're doing, so.
Yeah. TJ, you're gonna say something?
No, I was just trying to figure out which way we're gonna go here.
Oh, eh, so my, my recommendation is just to go with the one year, and that's simply because. With our budget for that select board expenses. Um, we're about to have this Mass Municipal Conference, Kara, Kara and I are both going to that, so there's gonna be, um. There's a registration fee that's your like five hundred.
Yes. You both gotta go.
No, it's five, five hundred. Yeah, there's like, it's a forty-five hundred dollar bottom line, we're already eight hundred into it. We got these fees for the conference, then there's lodging, meals, gas, tolls.
Peanut butter or jelly?
Actually, my brother's house, there's.
And Warren, you can't put food against office supplies. Not supposed to do that.
Well, but it's just a select for expense account, it's not like specifically office supplies.
No, no, what I'm saying is, I have an office supply account with over two thousand dollars, and I'm not gonna use that, so I can pay it, if you wanna do a year. I can pay it on that, if you don't care about doing, I'm sorry, two years. I have enough money. But if you run out of money in select board, you have to transfer, cause you can't, you can't. For food and hotels.
We might be talking about two different accounts, cause I thought you were talking about the slight for expense account.
No.
No, okay, then never mind.
The office supply account, and it's, I've only spent like thirty percent of it.
Okay.
So, and expect to maybe spend thirty percent of the next.
Yeah. You're talking about the town hall office supplies? Then by all means.
I'll make the motion to take your contract.
I second it.
All in favor?
I, I.
No, no, I'm sorry.
Then I'm like, no, wait a minute, so.
That's all right, confusion is good.
Next, we got a donation to the fire department from Pat and Gerald Weiss. That's in the amount of a hundred dollars, we just need a motion to accept that donation on behalf of the fire department.
I make the motion to accept the hundred dollar. Give from Pat and Gerald Weiss.
Second it.
Favor.
I.
All right, and then the next thing is just we got, uh, the standard mileage reimbursement rate is increasing. They do, they do it every six months. So for the second, for the first half of twenty twenty-three, it's gonna be. Yeah, exactly.
Make motion.
Oh. You can make a motion.
Well, I make a motion eventually.
It's here to entertain a motion, but now you guys can just do whatever you want, so.
So I'm gonna make the motion from point oh sixty-five to point six five five for mileage reimbursement.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
All right, and then real quick, we got some, uh, screening committee, um, appointments. Um, so this first set of names here is for the Assistant Treasurer Collector slash Treasurer Collector Position Screening Committee. Um, again, so the, the point of having these screening committees is that you can, um. Well, screen the candidates, but also if, um, any of the candidates want to have. Initially, in a closed meeting, you can do that, uh, the screening committee can go into effective session. Um, so that way, oh, sorry.
Who's this Christopher Dunn member, I, I, what do you think, TJ?
No, I, I, I would approve that, okay, I didn't, yeah. You gotta deal with these people.
So, so this was the question, so, uh, we initially had John Crane on there, John couldn't make our initial meeting. Um, now, of course, the dates have changed because we reposted the position. So, I'm personally have, you know, I'm on there or not, it doesn't matter to me, I'll be helping them out, okay, but. Okay, all right.
I, I make the motion to accept the committee as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
I, I. There you go, that's your committee.
And then the second one for the Fire Chief Position, um, so in this case, we just had three members, Chief Mother, Chief Dubiel. Uh, and then Adam Dolby from the, the Firefighters Association. Um, if you wanna expand that committee, it'd be five and have, you know, a majority residence. You know, we could consider that, um, otherwise, I would say, go ahead and vote it as. And again, I'm, I'm happy to serve on the committee as well, if, if needed.
Oh, you think a select board member should be on that?
Well, sure. It could be, it would be a selected member and.
What, you know, if you wanna volunteer, take one step forward.
I dropped my pen on my. Of course, it's gonna be during the day, so Kara can't be on it. You know.
Oh, yeah, she's gonna be at school.
Yeah.
Well, TJ, you got any interest in serving on it?
Not really.
Okay, we can keep it as a three-member committee if, if that, uh, that feels like.
What would interest me though? If you would sit in.
Well, I'll, I'll certainly be there.
Yeah, okay.
I'm gonna be working with them to put together the, the questions and the interview process, so I'll be there.
That's good.
Yeah.
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 I make a motion that we accept the committee as ready for the replacement Fire Chief.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
All right, great. Last action item here. Uh, so, I mentioned back in November, we got a hundred seventy-eight thousand dollar grant from. Uh, the Division of Local Services for this shared water operator project. Um, I think, I think you were both at the meeting where the. There's still obviously a lot of trepidation about this potential arrangement. Uh, what's important here is the funding, um, at, at least my understanding from my conversations. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and Town Council is that the funding, um, is there regardless. If we go through the process of studying this and don't end up with shared water operators, fine, that's okay. Um, we don't have to hand the money back or anything like.
No, this is a combined for both towns?
This is, uh, this is for both towns to share.
So as you said, we could go individual, would we give them half of this money back to Chester, is that what you're saying?
Uh, sorry, are you talking about the grant funding? No, so, so the grant funding, it's broken up, eh, ru- roughly fifty fifty, uh.
Okay, so they got a fifty, the same.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that's all, I, I, we don't have to go anymore, I got it. But I thought maybe, you know.
Yeah.
They, 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 they got a hundred and seventy-eight.
No, no, we. Yeah.
Okay, all right. That's, that's cool.
Just had to have it clarified.
Yeah, yeah.
I. Myself. I'm not on town water for one, okay? With everything that's been going on with water and, and the list of things outside of. The water treatment plant that has to be done. I don't know if a shared thing would be.
I'm not big on sharing.
Well, we know that, I heard about reviews.
They had to share it with six of us.
Yeah, but reluctantly. Anyhow.
Yeah.
I just questioned, isn't that just sharing the guy that operates the water plant, it's not any other connection between other than the operator?
Right.
It requires a special license.
You know, and, uh, which I don't, if we weren't having so many problems with our water treatment plant at this time. All right, this is all I'm saying. Uh, Joanne said it best, the people who are on town water deserve to get the best quality water that we, we have. And if. If the water commissioners got their heads together and said, all right. We're gonna revisit our debt exclusion to get whatever they need to bring everything up to where it has to be. Then I would say, yeah, I'd be willing to, uh, go forward with this, uh, shared, uh. Operator, operator, but the, but the, but the thing is, is that it seems like we keep piecemealiness as we go along. And I don't think it's fair to the people who are receiving the water. I mean, we have, we have a complaint already that they didn't pay a bill that, uh. Because of, uh, something that had happened, but from what I understand after speaking with the homeowner and the contractor. If they hadn't fixed the problem while the, while it was open. And they backfilled over it, and it broke, the contractor would still be blamed. And they're blaming the contractor for what happened, and they're not gonna pay him, and that's totally wrong. I mean, if, if they didn't want them to fix it, there was a guy there from the water department should have told them no leave. But they left, so. We, we have, we have a water problem here in town with.
Uh, you know, I would say the water department's making pretty serious strides in the right direction, they have their. Putting together capital improvement plan, they've got this water storage tank, uh, evaluation that they're doing. Um, you know, we've seen, oh, obviously, the town has put a bunch of ARPA money into them, but we've also seen them be, you know. Do a pretty good job of going out there and getting other funding sources as well, so, you know. I think for this piece, this is mostly to address the fact that it is really hard to. These water operators and get, stay in a small town like ours, with a very small water system. Um, and so by combining forces with Chester, the idea is that we can get a better pool of candidates.
So this hundred and seventy-eight is to split salaries to ways?
No, so it's the hundred seventy-eight, a portion of it again is for B V P C to do their work in administering the study.
Okay.
Our portion is for purchasing turbidity meters and other.
Okay, those meters that.
And Chester, they did elect to take their portion and use it to help them, um, with payroll. To kind of ease the position in, um, they are. You know, that was not the approach we wanted to go with, we try not to grant funds payroll, but, um, but that was there.
So now, on, uh, shared, uh, operator.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we'll be sharing our operator with them, and. How many hours are, are we talking that?
So, the point we're at right now is we have a memorandum of understanding that we're going through, line by line, figure out what each town's needs are. Um, and what kind of mix of hours in each community. Um, and what kind of mix of hours in each community makes the most sense, you know, maybe it'll just be fifty fifty, and you know, each operator will do twenty hours in each town. Maybe it'll be slightly, nah, um, we're still going through the process, and that, this funding would help us continue that process.
Got it.
There's no interest at all in diving into Chester, they just want this one body.
Yeah.
So they do their thing here, part-time, and do their thing in whatever Chester wants, and we split all of the costs, all of the, the pay, all of the benefits.
For this person.
For this person, but this person has its own problems in Chester, has its own problems here, that's all they're interested in doing right now.
There's no.
Yeah, no, that, that's the hope, and, yeah, there's, again, there's, we've heard a lot of trepidation from the water commissioners, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding. As I, every time we bring it up, somebody asks, emerging water systems, and that's not what this is.
No, no, it should have been somebody here from the water department explaining some of this, but.
We're gonna, they're gonna be meeting on Thursday with PBPC, um, you know, discussing this further, but because the select board. Uh, in a sense, if the town, um, they're the ones who have to accept the grant funding.
So, then I, I'll make, uh, the motion to accept the strap funding for the shared water commissioner. Or water.
Operator.
Operator, thank you. Do I hear a second?
Thinking about it. All right, I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
I.
I mean, my water bill just went up enough, they should be able to pay for everything.
Well, Neil, it's my only point is, is that if, if we, uh, extend the debt exclusion, if we can, and get this all done. Then it'd a hell of a lot less on repairs and maintenance and water.
Like seven hundred thousand in that plate right now.
Yeah, and that's not, and that's not the other nine hundred that they wanna talk about, what they gotta do in town. So. Let's get it done.
There is saying stuff on there, I can see her using the chat.
Is there any unfinished business?
No.
No.
Uh, these next two, um, you've already signed the paperwork, just need the words. Because, it, because it's happening tonight is because we had too many, uh, no. We had holidays, not many, we had holidays. I just need motions to have.
For twelve and thirteen?
They've already been paid, they've already been signed by you, but, yeah.
Oh, A, B, and C, they're on new business?
Yep.
A and B is.
All right, uh, I'll make the motion to, uh. Act on the approved divorce, uh, number twelve and number thirteen for payment.
Second it.
All in favor?
I.
I.
That last one is, of the U, right? It's this part that we usually go.
Oh, yeah, all department expense report, um, so I, I sent you an email with, uh. Well, I sent Deb an email. Um, just noting what I had seen in the all department expense report, um, few things to mention, um, utilities. Uh, this is.
Yeah.
It's gonna continue to be painful, because Eversource just upped their rates as of January one.
You know.
Um. Uh, so, you know, again, there'll just be another year where that's, that, but it items tight, we'll get to make.
You can only do what you can do on those.
Yeah, exactly.
There's no change in that, that's a, that's a tough one.
Yeah, um, and then beyond that, um, you know, there were some items I need to talk with Dave about, because he had a few overages. Um, so we're.
Highway department?
Highway, yep, so we're working to address those.
Fire department was kind of last thing, wasn't it?
Yeah, and it still is, and I. Yeah, I gotta talk to the chief, and I'm not sure, some of this is that, you know, he has a revolving fund for equipment, um, and so. So based on, uh, inspection fees at the service plazas, sometimes. Yeah, so sometimes he's, he's spent money and then he hasn't taken it in yet, so that might be what's going on there, I have to check with them, so. I will ask him about that, um.
Now, how's the, how was the garage, that we're gonna dig that hole up and start fixing that, those ramps, or what, we approved the money?
We approved the money, um, I haven't gotten an update from it, my exactly.
Cause I saw it call four off in front of one of the doors, have you noticed?
Oh, then, yeah, yeah, maybe they, maybe they started working on the frost.
Just to curious question, people ask me, and I like to be able to answer them, go, I don't know what's going on.
Yeah.
Oh, that worked for me. I can still remember my little name.
I know my initial.
Very good.
Yeah, I think that was, yeah. Uh, there was one, there was an interest payment issue. That was the other thing. Hold on, sorry, I just remembered there's one on the thing. Oh, yes, um, so one item you might see this, uh, there's an overage on is. Uh, the other interest account, which is way down at the bottom there, it's something that Sarah usually just deals with. Uh, basically, when borrowed for that Mass Works grant, uh, for the plant. After annual town meetings, so there was no appropriation for the interest, uh, on that. Um, so I'm gonna work with Sarah to figure out how we need to, to pay for that. Might just need to be an appropriation at the next annual town meeting, might need to do a special, we'll, we'll figure it out, so. But that's, uh, that's it for me.
That's it, Bertie.
Yeah. Make the motion to close the meeting.
I'll second that.
At, uh. Seven thirty-seven.
By the way, I know where you live now, on State Street, should have never said your address.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I worked up there for over thirty years, so I.
Where did you work in North Hampton, are you in Florence, or?
No, I was in King Street.
Oh, okay. You're on King Street.
You know where Greif Field Bank is?
Yeah, I think so.
We're across the street, there's a big oil tank, there's a million gallons of oil there.
That's, oh, that thing, yeah.
I always think, when we put one on, they just soar.
Uh huh.
I worked there, and I worked around the corner, industrial drive for ten years.
Uh huh.